All right, I called order this regular meeting of the Mount Pleasant City Commission. This Monday, April 27, 2020. And we can rise for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Clerk has row been taken?
It has, all are present tonight.
And under proclamations and presentations, manager really, I think she had a presentation.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to briefly formally announce to you and the public that we have hired Jason Moore as the city of Mount Pleasant's next director of public works. Jason started the city in 1999 as an engineer technician and has worked his way through various positions within public works. And one of his great strengths is his curiosity and constant interest in learning skills and new information. He seems to grow by identifying numerous sources to obtain knowledge on a topic and then finding creative ways to implement that process. Jason obtained and expanded knowledge of other parts of our city as he helped implement numerous database and business process improvements throughout the city. So he's now good at the city and its infrastructure and the DPW services. Allow him to continue moving the vision forward and his commitment to be greatly appreciated and we look forward to working with him.
Very well said. Thank you, Jason.
That's right.
I'm having a little bit of trouble hearing Nancy. So just to see if you can fix it on your end. Is anyone else having any trouble?
Yeah, a little bit.
Yeah.
Okay, I will speak up. Is that better?
Yes.
Yes, I'll speak up.
Do we have any additions or deletions to the agenda tonight? Seeing no raised hands and a lot of nodding, we can move into the first public comment on input on agenda items. This is the time for public comment on agenda items. That manager really will read that presented to the comment at MT-dash pleasant.org. And I just remind the public that they have the chance to comment by sending an email to that to that address before the end of the meeting, which is again, it's comment at symbol MT-dash pleasant.org.
Mayor, we have not received any written comments either throughout the day today or in the comment section today or tonight. So I have no comments to share with you.
Okay, all right, we'll close the public comment section at this time. And then under receipt of petitions and communications, manager really.
The only items we have on this part of the agenda this evening are the ongoing report on pending items and the first quarter investment report. You'll notice that there are no minutes from other boards and commissions because most of them have been canceled. Either due to not having any business or due to the challenges of having a virtual meeting with that particular board or commission. But the majority of them have been because there has not been pressing business that has required the meeting to have to take place. So that's why this section of your agenda is so short this evening.
Next is our consent calendar. Are there any items on the consent calendar that need to be removed? Seeing no raised hands, major really, if you can walk us through those.
Yes, we just have four items for your consideration tonight on the consent calendar. The first is approval of the minutes of your regular meeting of April 13. And you may have noticed that we did add the language related to the meeting. We held a Zoom. And as I indicated at the last meeting, we added similar language to your March 27 meeting minutes to make it clear that that one was held virtually as well. The second item on your consent calendar is to consider an amendment for engineering services contract for our reservoir bypass project that is scheduled to happen this fall. And the budget amendment is for two reasons. The first is for the actual construction engineering oversight that typically takes place on such a project. And the second part of the amendment is to have Row Professional Services modify the construction plan slightly from what were originally awarded. And the first modification is to address and overflow concern in the reservoir that was identified during a recent Eagle review of our water system. And the second small amendment is to deal with the removal of a surge that is connected to that that has failed. So the contract amendment to cover both of those services as well as the construction oversight is $25,600. And approval of that contract would include the approval for the appropriate budget amendment. The third item on the consent calendar is to consider a resolution from MDOT, which is related to a project they're doing on High Street to do a major rehabilitation of the large pump station that is near the bridge on High Street. And as a local unit, we're required to participate in that project by paying 8.75% of the total cost. And so we're recommending tonight, you approve the resolution as presented, which would authorize the city manager to sign the standard contract and would also include the appropriate budget allocation for that project. And the last item on the consent calendar is approval of payrolls and warrants.
Commissioner Gillis.
I move to accept the consent calendar as presented.
Vice Mayor Pirschbacher.
I second that.
Discussion.
I have one question, Mayor, on the item four. And I'm looking at that. Reading into this Ingalls made some requests about the current overflow and the removal of the reservoir bypass. Row is going to be doing this. And are they going to do this, do the updates and get it approved by Engel before it goes back to the contractor to add the extras on?
Yes, they will do that.
Okay, that's just what I wanted to check on.
Commissioner Gillis, you have your hand up. Okay. Any other discussion? If not, I'll, we will move to a roll call vote. And I will let Jeremy Howard, our city clerk.
Commissioner Alsager.
Hi.
Commissioner Gillis.
Hi.
Commissioner alone.
Hi.
Commissioner Ronan.
Hi.
Commissioner Tolles.
Hi.
Vice Mayor Pirschbacher.
Hi.
Mayor Joseph.
Hi.
Motion passes.
Okay. Next on our agenda, and I believe the only action item tonight is item number six, which is to consider a resolution confirming administrative actions regarding recreational marijuana licensing dates. And manager, really, did you have any comments to start us off?
Just real briefly, I would indicate that this resolution is very similar to the resolution that you saw two weeks ago to confirm administrative actions that have taken place over the last two weeks. And the resolution was prepared by our city attorney. And the confirmation of the administrative actions covered under this resolution would be two actions related to recreational marijuana facilities. And the first thing we did is we extended the date by which supplemental materials are due for the merit based process for recreational retailers to be May 27. Because we've been finding that the applicants have been having a difficult time gathering all of their information that's needed for that supplemental application in a timely manner and obtaining the appropriate information from the state. So that would extend the due date another month to be May 27. And then the second action would extend the due date for a special use permit for a Class C grower license to be June 1st. And again, that's a one month amendment for the same reason. So by approving this resolution this evening, you would confirm that you would confirm the approval of those two new due dates.
Vice Mayor Pirschbacher. Amy, you're you're on mute right now.
I got it. I moved to approve the resolution regarding recreational marijuana establishment license deadlines as presented.
Commissioner Gillis.
Second.
Okay, any discussion? See Commissioner Gillis's hand up. Seeing no further discussion, I believe we will move to a roll call vote then.
Commissioner Tolles.
Hi.
Commissioner Ronan.
Hi.
Commissioner alone.
Hi.
Commissioner Gillis.
Hi.
Commissioner Alsager.
Hi.
Vice Mayor Pirschbacher.
Hi.
Mayor Joseph.
Hi.
Motion passes.
Okay. Next on our agenda, I believe, is announcements on any city related business. And I believe major really had an announcement.
Yes, commissioners, I wanted to use this opportunity like I have at the last couple of meetings to give you and the public a short update on where we are in responding to the current coronavirus situation. As you know, we continue to evaluate our service levels on a weekly basis to ensure that we are in compliance with the changing executive orders that are being issued. And it continues to be obvious that our fire services, police services, water, wastewater and airport services have always fallen into and continue to fall into the critical service category and are still providing ongoing services. We all still also still are having trash collection services. But as you know, the curbside collection recycling pickup has still been suspended because the Isabella County Material Recovery Facility is still closed at this point in time. All the last couple of weeks, we have now added security department staff to support essential services to take care of essential services in our right of ways and in our streets to make sure our storm drains in our streets are properly protected. We're also, but the restroom facilities continue to be closed. And that's both for the safety of the public using the restrooms as well as the safety of our employees who require to be in those restrooms. And that included individuals who spend a lot of time in the restrooms. And so those restrooms continue to be closed, even though the parks are open for shorter activities. The park staff has also been this week to begin to prepare some of the parks areas in our public spaces to prepare them to be mowed as we expect that need to be right around the corner. We continue to still have staff monitoring phones and emails remotely to address service needs and administrative functions behind the scenes continue to happen. As we previously announced, the spring leaf pickup is occurring this week. The street department crew was out this week picking up leaves in one part of the city and will continue to work their way through the rest of the city to do that spring leaf pickup. As I previously indicated, because some of the properties are dependent on landscaping services to produce leaves for them, we had previously announced that we would do a second citywide pickup once the landscaping companies were able to work. And as of Friday, a new executive order, the landscaping services companies still can work. But quite frankly, I'm not sure that gave them enough notice to be able to provide their services before we started our pickup today. So we still are looking at scheduling a second citywide pickup in the very near future so that those properties who are dependent on landscaping services will have another opportunity. The other thing that we're looking at is backlog that has been growing in our housing licensing inspections. At this time, it appears that we still believe we can address that backlog by still being able to continue to do our standard inspections. We would just be looking at doing some of those inspections in the evenings and weekends since our firefighters are on shift at that time anyway, we would expand our hours when those could be scheduled. And we think throughout the early summer, we should be able to get those caught up. Part of that is dependent on when we can access the location to do the inspections. But based on what we know right now, we're still hopeful we can get that backlog caught up this summer. So it appears the only item we may need you to take action on regarding the housing inspections at some point would be to confirm the waiving of any late fees for properties that might have made their license application fees a little bit late. So those, I think, are the best update we can give on the service levels of what's been happening. And I know I've said this each week, but I think it bears repeating that we continue to be very thankful for the flexibility and the patience with people as we work through these new days of doing business. And that flexibility and patience, not only on the part of our residents and businesses who receive the services, but also the staff who is continuing to find their way through this different way of doing business and the commission who has been supportive throughout this whole process. And we continue to be thankful for all of those who are out on the front line working in the hospitals and as first responders and even in the grocery stores and the other things that are continuing to keep things available for our community. So I guess I would wrap up by saying that in one of our virtual staff meetings last week, we wrapped up the meeting by asking each staff member to provide two words that described their current feelings. And the words used by almost everybody really fell into things that I think are representative of how I think most of our community is probably feeling right now. And then one side, we heard words that were along the lines of being overwhelmed or uncertain. And at the other end of the spectrum, we heard words that were along the lines of hopeful, grateful and thankful. And I think, like I said, I think that's probably reflective of how most of our community is feeling right now. But I trust that we will continue to work together and we will continue to persevere. And I know that all of us throughout the community are learning immeasurable things, not only about ourselves and our families, but different ways of doing things that we each do on a daily basis. So when we come out on the other side, we're going to have a whole new toolbox to work in. So continue to work through it and hope that our community continues to stay healthy during all of this. And that concludes my report unless any commissioners have any questions.
That was very well said, manager. Really, are there any questions for Nancy? Anyone have any announcements or new business? Okay, I just wanted to, I wanted to say that we should probably expect CMU students coming in next week to move out for the dorm. I believe it was announced that move out will be taking place May 1st to the 9th. So we'll be seeing a lot of traffic in our community and I think that just people to be aware that we're going to see some, obviously some of our students coming back briefly and and also with the new governor's executive order that wearing, wearing a protective mask, something that you can even make at home is going to be required in most closed spaces, including the grocery store or shops and restaurants around town. So just be aware of things going on around you. So. Seeing no other announcements or new business, I think we can move into the final public comment section. Major, really, do we have any comments from the public?
No, Mayor, no additional comments have been submitted at this time.
Okay. With that, I believe we can recess for our work session. Or we could just move straight into it. How does everybody feel? All right, we'll just move straight into it. Obviously, our work session tonight is about our local relief options related to the COVID-19 pandemic. And as many of you know, it's, there's been a lot of hardship between our residents and our local businesses. And obviously, a very uncertain time and staff has prepared some items for discussion that are possibilities for us to potentially give some local relief in terms of fees, the mileage rate, different things like that. I guess I would hand it over. Major, really, did you have any comments to start us off?
You stole a lot of what I was going to say. But I would just say that what we've been looking at is the short term flexibility that we have at the city level. And so the question for the commission is really whether you want to utilize any of that short term flexibility to try to assist our residents or property owners or businesses in the short term. And we tried to focus the options that we offered to you in the work session packet in ways that would hopefully provide the most widespread relief if we decided to pursue any of them. But it's important to emphasize that any financial relief provided will have a negative impact on the finances of the city and the future flexibility that the city will have in its ability to continue to provide services over the long term. Because we expect that the economy may not recover in the short term. And our larger challenges at the city level may actually be seen in 2021 and future years, depending on how the economy does recover. Although we had an almost balanced budget this current year, it has be, it is becoming more apparent that some of the revenues that we expected for this year may not transpire as along the original projections that we had. So for instance, we were on a conference call last week, getting members from the state treasury and Michigan Municipal League. And they indicated that our state shared revenue payment that we expect to receive in June, which covers several sections that are me, would have been made in March, April. They are currently estimating that that payment, which is from six that we receive in a year, could be 50% of what we had originally anticipated. They were hesitant to predict what the future report payment is here might be because it all depends on when the economy gets re-engaged and how quickly it does recover. They also indicated that the gas sales during that same period have been going behind about 50%, which affects the street revenues that we receive. And then lastly, you know, with moving online classes, some of our water and sewer revenues are down because our flows are lower than they typically would be. But aside all that, we do have some funds in our pockets. So there are some options available to do. I think it's important for you and the community to understand that these are really short term options that the likelihood of being able to continue these in the long term at our current service hall is probably not available. But what we're looking for is your guidance tonight to see if any of these potential options, whether you would like any additional information on them or whether you are ready to have any of them brought forward to you for actual considerate official action at one of your upcoming meetings. So the document we have for you is broken basically into four categories. Ones that are utility billing related, ones that are tax bill related, ones that have to do with fees and charges, and then basically an other category. So with that, Mayor, I would turn it back over to you for the discussion.
Okay, thank you. First, before we get into specific categories or items of discussion, are there any general questions of any of the things that have been presented in the packet? I think before we discuss necessarily the merits, just general questions. Okay, seeing none. Is there any interest in having additional research or information provided on any of the potential options? I think like, for example, one thing that I suppose I'd like to see a little more research in is there's some discussion about towards the end about the LDFA and the DDA in those captures. And I would like to know if if there's possibility to use those funds or other funds in ways if we change the capture to zero, what the city could possibly do with those funds, including maybe some sort of grant program for some of our small business owners, things like that. That's.
Mayor, I would indicate that we spoke with the city attorney briefly about that last week. And he indicated that there would be quite a large number of limitations of how we could use those funds if we were using them for individual businesses due to some items in the state constitution and state law about lending the credit of the city to others. But until we know more specifically what kinds of programs you might be looking for, we would need to know that before we could further research with the attorney whether there's some state laws that would allow us to use the taxpayer funds in those ways. But it really needs to be a bit more specific about what our intent is to be able to complete that research.
Commissioner Ronan.
Yeah, I think, I think I'd like to argue for a more sort of comprehensive approach where we look at some things that are short term, some things that are intermediate term, and some things that are long term. You know, some of the, and a little more of a an overall package, I guess, that I do. That I think there are some things within the next couple of months that people could use. And I think there's some things more long term that people could use. Even in terms of the grant options you were talking about, I think that's a great idea, Mayor. And I'd like to argue that the attorney pursue that pretty vigorously in terms of whether those agencies could use that money to provide some type of relief for businesses that have experienced hardship. I mean, so something that's more organized in terms of short term, intermediate term and long term. Or a short term being maybe by summer tax season, intermediate term maybe being toward the first of the year or something and then long term being maybe a year from now.
Commissioner Tolles.
After my discussion with Mary Ann and Nancy, I think it's just kind of too early to jump to this discussion here about adding con items. kind of too early to jump to this uh discussion here about starting con items. Uh, I feel the city's in a good stance right now. With a plus column, and I can't see starting to impact some of these items and go somewhere where we don't know what's around the corner right now. Also, I've heard from two sources, CMU is uh contemplating to cut each department by twenty percent, uh which I think could have a big effect on students coming to Central here. I just feel there's some items on here, like waiving of late fees. You know, I can, I can see some leeway going there, or some of the uh recycling, you know, which we can figure out how much the people lost and then give them a credit back of thirty or forty dollars, you know, on their bill, whatever it is. And I think moving ahead to do this, I think is just a, a bad move right now, not knowing the outcome of what's gonna happen.
Uh, Commissioner Elsager?
You're muted, Mary.
Mary?
Sorry, sorry. Um, one of the areas that I thought it maybe wouldn't be needed to cause, to call for release was some minor um you know, taking off of fees such as an administrative fee for a bill, things like that. I think there's people that will gladly pay those full bills. And then if we can find other ways for relief for people that need help, we could find other ways. That's my comment.
Commissioner Gillis?
Um, yes. Um, I also agree about the waiving of the late fees. Um, we won't be able to do anything about the shut-off notices right now or the shut-offs uh because that's under executive order not to do anything about those bills. Uh, my idea about where we could generate some money would be the elimination for one year of the LDFA and maybe up the DDA as well. Enough to um cover the administrative fees that we I would hope we could consider waiving those administrative fees on the summer tax bill. Those were about the same amount. Uh, if we waived the administrative fee, it would be about a hundred and seventy thousand dollar reduction to the general fund. And if we eliminated the LDFA and the DDA capture for one year, it frees up a hundred ninety-one thousand dollars, so it's almost a tit-for-tat. And in that suggestion, uh, everyone would get a reduction on their summer tax bill uh because of the administrative fee not being incorporated into that summer tax bill. So it would give a, a bit of relief to everyone across the board, which is um, I feel more fair and equitable than um targeting a certain population of our taxpayers. It might be that next year, we also will make a wave uh or um try, you know, we might consider not capturing the DDA and LDFA that year as well to then help the small businesses if they're not able to get any financial relief from the state and federal levels. Uh, I don't want to jeopardize any uh or um construction during the summer. Um, I know one of the options was uh reducing the capital improvement millage. And it might defer some of the capital improvement projects. But I think that would also roll right back down to eliminating some work that people had been counting on or may have already bid on. So I wouldn't be in favor of that, but um that was my ideas on some of the, the um options we had.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Gillis. I just, before we, before we get into, I think we should probably work down that those list of like those four categories and get into specific ideas. Are there any like general questions that we think staff should have more research into? Before we sort of move down that list? I see Commissioner Ronan's hand up, I don't.
Um, no, that, that was from before, actually. I, I don't um I, again, I'd like to see them organized in some way so that we're not doing this piecemeal. Yeah, I, I feel like it's, I, I feel like it's tremendously piecemeal at this point and, and just lacks any clarity. I, I think coming up with uh, again, short-term, intermediate, long-term, where we know the specific, eh, the specific populations we're targeting, why we're targeting them, and and what we expect the outcome to be, and I, I, I just, I, I like something more organized than just going piecemeal by these different pieces, because then we don't really have a sense of how, what the unintended consequences could be, like what Pete was talking about. I mean, I think, I don't know. We could go one by one, but I, 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 either way.
Okay. Commissioner Gillis?
Well, in order to give relief to, eh, well, for some of these options to be even considered, such as waiving the late fees, like on the water bill, on the city's water bill, that would be something that we could do just as a starting point. So we probably would have to do it a little bit piecemeal. And then maybe for some of the other options that we have, we want more information, get more information and then move on that. But some of them, like the tax bills, if we're gonna do anything to the tax millage, we have to decide that now before summer taxes go out. If we're gonna reduce the administrative fee, we have to decide that now, you know, like within the next two weeks. Uh, if we're going, eh, city bills are already going out for the water bill. We've already extended the city's water bill to May fifteenth without any fee, that was April's bill to May fifteenth. They gave them a whole, you know, the whole community got an extra thirty days to pay for it. So some of these things, we'll probably have to look at now, you know, so that two weeks from now, we can have those on our agenda. And some things that may, we want more information, so we're gonna set that aside just to see what the um the pros and cons are for that. Um, but hopefully, we've all from the information that Ms. Ridley gave us about how the impact of this no transportation, less revenue coming in, I'd hate to um shoot off our, you know, foot with taking cuts off of our revenue or giving away. And then next year being in a predicament, we may have to consider raising the millage. So I would rather tread lightly until we see the impacts of what this is gonna be. If it's gonna be a three-month, if it's gonna be a six-month, if it's gonna be to the end of the year where we might not even, you know, we can't even imagine what kind of budgets we're gonna be dealing with. Um, and that's why I suggested the LDFA and the DDA. And, and like, I, I realize we have to look into the taxes, if we can actually collect taxes and then put it into another bucket, but they're already doing that anyways. But, but that's all something for the, our lawyer to examine and find the legalities of, so.
Okay. Well, I, I think, I think the, the conversation is obviously what, about what is, what we need to act on um quickly. Uh, if we're going to do anything, and I think the, the first item that really has the most pressing um decision to be made is, is probably the summer tax bill issues. Um, and the, you know, the options presented before us are to waive the late fee on summer taxes between August first and September fifteenth, um, which I believe the September fifteenth aligns with the state of Michigan due date. There is also the waive one percent administrative fee for charge on the summer tax bill, reducing the one and a half capital improvement millage to zero for the year, reduce the operating millage by some potential amount for the year. Um, and then lastly, in that, in that category is to defer, reduce, or eliminate downtown specialty assessment for landscaping and parking lots, no removal. Um, I think we should probably start first with um, probably the one that I think we, that is probably the easiest um in talking about the waiving the late fee on the summer taxes between August first and September fifteenth. And so I, I think we should probably start there unless anyone objects to that idea. Commissioner Gillis, I see your hand up.
Um, yes. Have we already decided, because we gave administrative um so, so that Nancy could not put late fees on the water bills, but that was only through a certain date, is that right, Nancy?
You confirmed the action that we took with the April bills. But then on last week, we had to generate the bills that would typically be due May fifteenth. And Mary Ann, on that one, we administratively waived the late fees on those bills as well, correct? Yeah, she's nodding her head yes. So we had to go ahead and do that last week before we could generate the bills. Um, so we have taken that administrative action to deal with late fees for one more month than those utility bills already.
Well, we're talking about the summer tax bill. Hey Laura, I think you're muted. I think it looks like you're trying to say something.
Sorry, I'm just going from the top of the list. I know the top of the list was the, the utility bills fee.
Right, yep, I skipped that one for now, cuz it, cuz I think the tax bill is the one that's probably most pressing and in front of us. In terms of, we have to act quicker.
That we uh waived the late fee on the uh summer millage, summer tax bill.
Summer tax. Um, Commissioner Elsager?
I would agree with Commissioner Ronan about waiving the late fee.
Commissioner Lalone?
Waive it.
Uh, okay, Commissioner Lalone, so is there any? Um, I'm also in favor, I think, I think aligning ourselves with the state due date uh is sort of a no, no-brainer. Um, it's gonna give our residents a little more time to pay that bill. And as we know, the summer, the summer tax bill is obviously the more expensive one. And um with the, you know, with the hit with student, a lot of CMU students going back home over the last couple of months, um, a lot of people, if you own a small business, uh finding those dollars, taking a little extra time to find those dollars is, is probably gonna be helpful. Is there any other discussion on that specific point, the, the late fee? It looks like we have a consensus on the, on the late fee, if I'm not mistaken. So we can, I guess we can move down the list. Um, there is the one percent administrative fee charged on the summer tax bill. And as Commissioner Gillis noted earlier, um, that would uh, that amounts to about a hundred and seventy thousand dollars. And our packet from staff said that would require a transfer from our unassigned fund balance to cover the current operation, and that, that generally covers, I believe, staff time to uh, to process those bills, is that? Does that say that's accurate?
Mary Ann, can you address that?
Yes, that's correct. Um, actually, the uh administration fee is charged on all non-city millage cuz the city millage covers our cost as a city. But the administration fee is charged on the millages that we collect for the other units rather than having them pay us to collect their taxes. So it's actually on the summer bill and the winter bill.
Okay.
I, I, I'm not sure I understood what you were saying, Mary. So what other units?
Well, the, on the summer bill, you have the RASD, the school, and the county, and the library. So on those millages, there's one percent administration fee on those. On the winter bill, you have um the recreation millage for the county, the I-Ride, and the um school.
Got it.
Hey, George, just, just so we.
I'll raise my hand next.
Yeah, use your, thank you. Uh, Commissioner Elsager?
So I guess my question is for Mary Ann. So the fee that we're talking about is collected by the city to give to those entities?
No, we keep it rather than charging them to collect their taxes for them. We charge the taxpayer to collect those taxes.
Okay, thank you. I, I think I still would be in favor of not waiving that.
Are there any other thoughts, Commissioner Gillis?
Um, and the only way I would consider that is if we had something to plug that hole with, other than um the fund, if we were taking from the LDFA and the DDA. Cuz those are taxes that we already don't get. Now, if we gave up those tax captures, we would only be able to get the city's portion of those taxes that are captured. And that would give a plus if we were to eliminate the LDFA and the DDA. All the other entities like Commission on Aging, uh ICTC, the library would all collect their own taxes. I, I don't think we could capture, I don't know. Um, Nancy, or Ms. Ridley, can we capture all those taxes if we wanted to do something different with those?
We either have to, um, it has to be an across-the-board decision. You either implement the capture rate for all of the units, including the city, or you adjust the capture rate for all of the units, including the city. It has to be uniform.
But the um, the library apps out, there was a law written a few years ago that allowed the library a lot of, app-outs. We don't capture library millage, um, nor do we capture school millage in the DDA, but there is school millage, millage captured in the LDFA.
Vice Mayor Pirschbacher?
Um, well, when you're looking at a one percent administrative fee by waiving that, is really not a lot of um relief for the small businesses. I mean, if you have a small business that pays six thousand dollars for their summer taxes and they haven't had much going on all, you know, all this spring because of students leaving and the shutdown and such, one percent of six thousand isn't really, it's not gonna help them. So I'm just wondering if maybe, you know, we can think of something other than that, because I mean, that's not gonna take a lot off. The person's still going to have a huge bill and still going to have to figure out how to, you know, pay for it. Is there something we can do with like payment plans or um you know, setting it up so that we could push some of it into the winter tax? Or something like, I'm not sure. I mean, I do, I do personal taxes, I don't do like capturing taxes, but I'm just not sure what we would have to do for that.
A lot of the um deferring of payments is up to the state law, so we don't have any um ability to do that. The latitude that we do have is between July thirty-first and September fifteenth cuz that's in accordance with our city charter, so we have local authority to do something with that. Um, but other than that, there's always payment plans available cuz you can make payment plans up until the time that the county forecloses on it. But the interest amount is set in the state tax law as far as how much interest is charged on those deferments.
Okay. Commissioner Tolles?
Well, I'm, I'm not in favor of uh waiving this one percent fee uh that's taken a hundred and seventy thousand out of the general fund. And uh, I thought that's why we spent time this last week with uh uh, Major Ridley and, and Mary Ann on getting some kind of consensus on this whole thing, and I, and that's what I thought we had. Uh, now, we're piecemealing this and just going item to item. Uh, again, I, I can't see taking from the LDFA or taking from the DDA or taking excess money out of the general fund. Again, uh, we don't know what's around the corner right now. And I think you're gonna lose a lot of businesses, you know, when this is all said and done. The national average is looking at about twenty percent just in the restaurant business. I think we're just getting the cart in front of the horse. I mean, we don't have to be addressing this right now. I, I could see waiving some of the late fees and the, and the uh waive the late fee on the taxes, which, which we just went over. But getting into the capital improvements, uh, waiving this one percent administration fee, I where, where are we gonna make this money up if we get into a problem? We're gonna have to raise the millage? This doesn't make any common sense. This doesn't make any common sense.
Commissioner Ronan?
I, I, I'm, I'm also not a fan of this in particular, but I, I wonder um, if there's a, um, a, I heard something about a hardship, uh, process being available for people who are severely impacted by this. Is anybody, we could on a case by case, but is there something in place that the city has for hardship cases or?
The state tax law has a hardship, um, application that people can make, and we have a policy on what that is. And it's, um, basically set up for residents. I'm not for sure for businesses. We never had a hardship for business. Um, there's also a person who's a senior citizen or a veteran could, um, have their taxes for summer deferred until February, as long as their income is under, I think it's forty thousand dollars now. Um, so there is those two avenues that are in the state tax law. But we don't have a lot of latitude that we can do because we're collecting taxes for other entities too. And we have to follow the state law.
George, go ahead.
Okay, um, I, yeah, so it'd be good for me i- if we had sort of an, an understanding of what's, what, what the options are available, uh, for people having hardship. Um, I, I, I'm not necessarily in favor, I, I, for an across-the-board item, because I agree that we don't know what the future holds. And, uh, and why I, I, I would not be in favor at any point, at least today, of getting us into a position where we have to increase the millage. I, I, I just, I, I think we need, I, I would agree with Pete in that way, that we need to tread slowly and cautiously.
Okay. Thanks, George. Um, yeah, I, I, I don't wanna try not to piecemeal every detail of, uh, this document, but I wanted to dive into those two because I think um, they're worth discussion. And also I think the, the taxes, there's things that, you know, is the most immediate thing that, although we did have discussions with Manjri Ridley, um, individually, I think as a group, we haven't discussed. And so it was important, I think, to get at least the consensus, um, out there. And it seems we have a consensus, uh, of not waiving the one percent administrative fee at this point. Um, and I guess I would, I would leave it open. Is there any other items under the tax bill related? Um, that people are in favor of changing from the status quo? So if you wanna leave things how they are, besides the wave, waiving the late fee from August first, or August first and September fifteenth. Um, I think we've already decided that part, but the other parts that are under that. Um, is there any, anyone who feels strongly about any of those other items that are under the tax bill? Commissioner Gillis?
So we will continue to waive the late fees on the utility bills for how long then? Just this month or what?
We didn't get there yet. But, but, but we can get.
The top portion that you're talking about, isn't it?
I know, I jumped to the tax bill. We can go to the utility bill. Uh, I just wanted to kind of wrap up the tax bill portion.
Okay.
And Mayor, on the tax bill portion, if the only thing we're going to pursue at this time, because these are time-sensitive, is the late fee between July thirty first and September fifteen. What we would do at your next city commission meeting is we would bring you a resolution that we would ask you to officially act on. That so that way we would have the opportunity to have you act on it and then still get the tax bills out in a timely manner. So that's actually most time-sensitive. So that, that piece that you seem to be interested in, we will bring to you for official action at your May eleventh meeting.
Okay. Uh, Commissioner Al Sager?
Um, I would agree with your summary, Commissioner Joseph, just to stick with the first two decisions we made and leave it there.
Okay. Commissioner Ronan?
Um, at, at, when, 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 when you bring that, um, forward, is it possible at the next meeting as well? I don't know if this is off script or if I'm not allowed to ask this, but, um, uh, to also have information on what waivers are available for residents that are suffering hardships? I mean, could we be clear about that and have some document or something that, uh?
Yes, certainly. We can, we can include that in the packet as well because there's an approved policy related to that. That's in compliance with the state law, so we will include that. So you have that for reference.
Thank you, I'm, I can.
Commissioner Tolles?
Uh, question from Mary Ann and Nancy. I, I thought they just both said that we worked on waiving the utility bill for April. And if I stand corrected, you said we're also waiving the one for May, correct?
That is correct. So we, a- at this point, we've been doing it on a month-by-month basis. Um, so we are set now until the May bills have to go out. Um, so, um, I think at that point, we can even continue to waive that on future bills or not for the utility bills.
Okay, do we have to have a motion on that?
No, we don't.
Okay, so I don't see a problem there. If the, if the governor lifts the ban on the fifteenth, then, you know, water bills, utility bills go back the way they are. We've already done it for April and May, so where, where's the problem there? I don't understand. If she extends it, then we have to look at that again for June, correct? Thank you.
Uh, Commissioner Ronan, you still have your hand up in the queue. Is it? You have some, okay. All right, well, I, I think it looks like you've can move on from the tax bill and talk a little bit about the utility bill, since there are definitely some interest there. Um, so far we've, we've waived the utility or the late fees. Um, there was some discussion in some, about, uh, a payment plan or, and continuing to suspend shut-offs. And I think shut-offs are also part of the executive order. Um, so I guess, is there, is there any opinions about a payment plan or anything like that? Uh, Vice Mayor Pirschbacher?
Um, I think a payment plan for, um, individuals is reasonable. Um, but I do encourage all residents, if you're able to, you know, pay your bills, just pay your bills. Otherwise, they just keep growing. You know, and that's the, that's the one thing that, um, uh, some people are not understanding is that they'll still be there. So even if you can pay a partial payment on your utility bills, it's better than not paying at all. But I think that we should be able to, um, establish some sort of payment plan.
Commissioner Gillis?
Uh, yes, I'm in favor for payment plans set up for people, um, and partial payments, uh, to make sure that that is all being done in good faith and, and to help them not get so far behind that it's almost, you know, impossible to pay a big water bill. But, um, I would be also in a favor of payment plans.
Commissioner Lulon?
I'm in favor of payment plans as well.
Commissioner Tolles?
Uh, one quick, uh, comment on this. You know, we have an executive order in place right now, so you can't turn off the water. Most people that are renting apartments or renting houses have security deposit, deposits. So if they're moving out and leading, leaving and they're not gonna pay the bill, the landowner actually gets stuck with it, but the landowner has their security deposit. So they can take and use part of the seri- security deposit, excuse me, to pay for the bill. I mean, this is the only place, like in a country, that assesses water bills right to the landowner when they change hands. I mean, if, if you've got any electric or, uh, Michcon gas or anything else, that person moves out, that goes with that person. It doesn't stick with the landowner. And the landowner has the option to go ahead and take it out of the security deposit. It's very simple.
Yeah, I, I agree. I agree with my fellow commissioners. I think, um, establishing some sort of payment plan um, is reasonable for, for people to, to be able to address those utility bill, um, concerns. Um, and it looks like we have a consensus on that. Because I opened the floor. Are there any other discussion items for utility bill? Um, issues or matters? Okay. We, I think we can move on. Um, next, I guess we can move on to uh, the fees and charges related. And, and those were, those were some of the, the housing, the building permits, zoning and planning. Um, peak is in there, and obviously there are others that are listed. Um, those would also require a transfer from the on assigned fund balance to cover our current operations. And I know there's been some, some discussion here tonight about what things are, are necessary right now and what things might be better to address later. And, um, I guess I'd just open it up for discussion. And if Manjri Ridley, if you had any, um, comments to guide this discussion as well.
I guess two comments I would make is, one is this decision can be made at any time because you have, um, complete autonomy over local fees and charges. They are all set by the city commission. So you can adjust those fees at any point in time. Um, so I think you do have some time to wait and see what continues to happen. The other thing related to these fees is, um, they're a little less widespread than some of the other items that we previously talked about. Because typically a fee or a charge, someone is getting a specific service that they wouldn't normally get, or they're paying for a special permit that they're getting that everybody in the city gets. So these are less widespread impact if you start to adjust any of these fees and charges. So even though we tried to give you things that were widespread, it really isn't, um, as much like that. Um, and you do have a lot of time to look at these if you would prefer to wait and see what happens.
Okay. I know one item of discussion we talked about briefly last week was about, um, the food truck fee for a thousand dollars. Um, and, you know, I, I think there's, that's a fee that, you know, that would have an immediate impact on those businesses. And I know part of that fee covers the inspection, but also covers, um, it's a fee that is also sort of, uh, to, you know, to increase the parity between, you know, a brick and mortar restaurant business versus one that, um, doesn't have to pay property taxes. And so I would, you know, if people have some opinions on that, I would encourage discussion. Um, and it looks like Commissioner Al Sager, I'll recognize you.
Yeah, I, I wasn't really gonna talk about the food truck issue, but just in general to say, I think it's smart for us to wait and see what happens.
Okay. Commissioner Tolles?
Uh, my comment on that is, uh, we're charging a, a yearly fee, okay? I can't see waiving the whole thousand dollars. If the person shut down, let's say, we get to go ahead in May and they're back in business. You know, they've lost a month, month and a half. Just credit that back. Very simple. You just can't waive the whole thousand dollars. If you go back in, in June, you know, just waive those couple of months. It's very simple. How can you sit there and, and, and waive the whole thousand dollar fee? These people aren't a brick and mortar and they're competing against brick and mortar. Paying huge tax, taxes, property taxes and everything else. Employing multiple people and everything else. So how is that fair to establish it that the cost is a thousand dollars? And now you just wanna waive the whole thing? It just doesn't work that way. You can get a credit for a month or two months or whatever it is. It's just simple to do it that way. I can't see waiving the whole fee. Then anybody else that's gonna come in that's got one is gonna wanna a zero fee. How is that gonna?
Commissioner Ronan?
Sorry, I'm, I'm used to another platform where you click on the mic, it's whatever. Um, I, yeah, I, I'm sort of, I'm not a fan of waiving the fee as well. I mean, it seems like this would be an opportunity for someone with a food truck to make a lot of money. Right? I, I mean, I, it, it seems like an ideal business opportunity for someone. I, I'm not sure that there's any hardship there that I'd see. But maybe I'm missing something. Uh, I, I just don't see what waiving the fee would do. Or why we'd need to. I, I agree. People with brick and mortar stuff that are shut down, they have to go to, um, takeout only. I, I think they're, I mean, if there are fee, I can waive on them. I, I might, yeah.
Commissioner Gillis?
Uh, yes, I am also in agreement with my fellow commissioners about not waiving the food truck licensing fee. Uh, we have brick and mortar business owners that are paying taxes to us. Um, and if they have a brick and mortar in the community, they can serve right from their brick and mortar operation in, uh, takeout fashion. Uh, but we would have no control over food trucks outside of our community coming and parking, uh, and taking business away from our local community that's struggling. And so I, I'm not in favor of waiving a one thousand dollar fee for food trucks.
Okay. But it appears we have some sort of consensus on at least that fee. Um, and given any other discussion on the other fees, it seems like the, the, the initial feeling is to sort of wait and see on some of those. Um, if I'm reading that wrong, please raise your hand. Okay. All right, so then I think we can move on, um, to the items, sort of the last items on the list. Um, which include, um, some other, some other things, including the D D A, the L D F A. Um, reduce slash eliminate the nine percent late fee on outstanding miscellaneous receivables. Um, and then also repurpose existing funds for different programs that include the neighborhood endowment, um, or the mural art funds from the, for downtown business economic relief and I'd open it up for discussion. Commissioner Gillis?
Um, yes, um, with those available options under, uh, other, the only one that I would be interested in is eliminating the taps, tax captures. And in specifically more the L D F A than the D D A. Um, I wouldn't be interested in using the neighbor endowment funds or reducing or eliminating the nine percent late fee. Um, I think the mural art funds, um, I think should stay where they're at because we're probably gonna need a little bit of that enlightening and enlightenment downtown when they come back to life.
Okay. Any other discussion from the commission? Commissioner Lulon?
Um, I agree with, uh, Commissioner Gillis. I'd be interested in talking about, uh, reducing the L D F A to free up some money.
Because I'll, I'll add my two, my two cents. Um, in, in, I guess in, in terms of the, the D D A or the L D F A, um, I think, I think obviously, um, reducing the capture would free up some money for the city in general. But I, I guess I, before I would say, okay, to move forward with those ideas. I'd like to see really a firm, like what do we, what do we plan to do with those monies? Um, since so far we really, um, we haven't really endorsed um, any other, um, you know, major cuts to our revenue. And so what, what would we do with that money? Um, I, obviously I'd be interested in sort of giving that back to some of our small business in, in a program that obviously needs to be defined. Um, to fit within state law. So I'd be interested in pursuing something like that. I'm also not in favor of reducing the 9% late fee on outstanding receivables. Or at this point, I'm, I'm okay with leaving the neighborhood endowment and the mural art funds as they are, so. Commissioner Ronan.
Yeah, I was just wondering if Mary might be able to, I I know there's a lot of, maybe nobody's watching. I don't know, you know, it's hard to know if you're doing this type of format, but but assuming someone is, I I wonder if we could do a brief description of what the DDA and the LDFA is so that anybody listening would, you know, we use these acronyms and they're sort of familiar to us, but I I I'm not sure that everybody would have the same understanding. Could somebody just take a minute and explain what they are?
Mary Ann, you want to do that?
Okay, the LDFA is the Local Development Finance Authority. It's for the property, the University Smart Zone and on the CMU campus. And they capture taxes to cover the CMU RC and MMDC contracts. The DDA is Mission Street. And Mission Street is the corridor down Mission, and they capture taxes to do capital projects on Mission Street to provide some beautification, the bricks and streetscape along Mission Street. Did some alley improvements on Mission Street. The DDA captures 28% of the taxes that are paid by those businesses. And the LDFA captures 40% of the taxes paid by those businesses.
Thank you.
Commissioner Tolles, you have your hand up.
Yes. I know on the reduce and eliminate the 9% late fee. On the LDFA, I really think if we want to do not capture that, because I think most of that money is wasted anyways. That goes to Middle Michigan Development and the Smart Zone of CMU, which competes with local businesses here. And as far as the tribal funding, I wouldn't mess with that at all. I just leave it the way it is right now, being that the casino is closed. And revenues are way down right now and per cap is way down, so that's my feeling on those three items.
Any other discussion on those items in front of us? I don't, I don't know that we have a consensus to do anything at this moment with any of those besides. There seems to be some question about the LDFA funds. But it looks like the the reducing the 9% late fee on outstanding receivables and the neighborhood endowment and the mural art fund, we are leaving as is. So maybe that is some information to move forward with with potential LDFA and DDA options. Major Really, did you have any, did you need any other information from the commission?
I just had one question for Mary Ann, if we could, please, before we wrap that up. Mary Ann, if we were to make adjustments to the capture rate for either LDFA and or DDA, at what point in the year does that decision have to be made by?
It has to be made by the time I make my first disbursement of the taxes, whether I'm going to disperse it to the unit or the DDA, which the first disbursement is made July twenty fifth, so we have some time.
So what I was thinking, Mayor, is what we could do is look at both of those budgets and give some more details about what an adjustment in those captures might mean to those budgets. And maybe even have an opportunity for each of those two boards so that they have it seems like
if anyone else is having issues, but I think your internet connection is a little slow, Nancy.
I'm sorry. I even came into the office so I'd have a good internet connection.
I think it's the microphone.
I'm sorry, I'll try it again. I just say, I think we should give those boards an opportunity to give input before July twenty fifth. Before you have to make that decision.
Yeah, yeah. I think that's wise. I guess in terms of, you know, any potential like small business programs, what kind of information would you need, you know, from us in terms of pursuing that and having Mike look further, further into those issues?
Um, I think we would need to know what kind, Mary Ann, why don't you do it since your microphone is working better?
As Nancy indicated, it's a lot of lending of the city's credit that we can't do. I believe what we found in the past is that you can do it for things that benefit the community, such as beautification of the outside of your business so that it looks more attractive, but actually helping tax or helping the businesses themselves is very unlikely that we would be able to come up with a program like that. You have to have some sort of a community benefit rather than an individual benefit. We might be able to come up with something as a loan program, but the loan program would then again be granting the credit of the city to individual businesses, which isn't, isn't allowed, so that's going to be a tricky one.
Yeah.
So we could ask the attorney to tell us under what statutes we could develop a program, and that would greatly narrow the scope potentially.
Okay. Yeah, I think that would be beneficial to our, to our discussion. Commissioner Gillis, see your hand up?
Yes. I can only guarantee that when we do speak to the LDFA I have been on the commission for five years, and during my first year, I was bringing up the cost benefit from this tax capture. Every year, they have had sold their goods without anything from year to year coming to the Smart Zone for development. So I just want to give you a heads up that I'm sure the LDFA will try to sell their goods that the, that they're essential and that we have to give them their taxes. They do have some backup funds that they can find relief from in their own budgets. But I think moreover, we should be considering our community members that pay taxes and businesses rather than a tax capture that hasn't shown any effectiveness since I've been on the commission, so. And it's been in existence for probably thirty years, so. Thank you.
Uh, Mary Ann, I see your hand is up.
I just wanted to say on the LDFA, we do have contracts with MMDC and CMU RC for this year. They could pay those contract payments out of their fund balance. It just would limit future contracts, not this current contract.
Commissioner Ronan. Commissioner Tolles.
I have to agree with Commissioner Gillis on that, on the LDFA and from the past seven or eight years that I've looked at it. They do a beautiful brochure and and do a dog and pony show, but basically no new businesses are coming in. We just got an expansion on this plan or an expansion on this plan, and nothing new is being developed. And I just think it's a waste of money. And also, I want to clarify another thing before we go outside tonight. I am not against food vans. I have friends that have some of those food vans. Also, I'm trying to put this on a level playing field where everybody's equal, okay? Bought the license for a year. Everybody's got a hardship. You couldn't use it for a couple of months, then fine. The next license you buy, you pay for ten months instead of a year. That's the only point I was trying to make. They're trying to make a living too, just like everybody else.
Well, I don't see anybody else's hand up. Manjore really, is there anything else you need from the commission or anything you'd like to add?
I think we have enough direction of what we need to do next, so you will see a couple of these items on your next agenda for actual action, but I think we're good for tonight.
Okay, well, thank you, everybody, for a great meeting, and I will adjourn this meeting at eight twenty. Have a good night.